All right, good evening. We are right at seven o'clock, so I'll call tonight's City Council meeting to order. And Karen, do we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Husnick?
Here.
Councilmember Beistrum?
Here.
Councilmember Munson?
Here.
Councilmember Valento?
Here.
And Mayor Bain?
Here.
I'd like to invite everyone to rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation underground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Council, we have an agenda before you this evening. However, before I ask for a motion to approve the agenda, I do have two minor adjustments. We will be removing from the consent agenda items 6F and 6G. Both of those will be moved to a future agenda for council's consideration. And with that modification, I would move that council approve the agenda, again, removing consent agenda items 6F and 6G.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. And our agenda is approved. Next item this evening is open forum. Open forum is any interested parties' opportunity to address council on any topic of your choosing. I also will note that tonight's agenda does include a public hearing related to council's consideration of the tax levy for budget adoption. So if you have comments on that, I would welcome you to hold comments until that public hearing. Otherwise, happy to entertain any public comment that we may have. Karen, is there anybody signed up or anybody online?
I've known.
All right. With that, we'll move back to our consent agenda. And council, for your consideration is consent agenda items 6A through 6E. And entertain a motion or any changes?
Mayor Bain, I'd like to pull item B.
Very good.
And I need to pull item C.
All right. We will move items B and C. And is there a... So with that, I would motion council approve consent agenda items 6A, D, and E. Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. And our consent agenda is approved. Moving on to consideration of consent agenda items or item 6B, which is to consider minutes for September 12th, a regular council meeting.
I'd make a motion that we approve the minutes for the September 12th meeting.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Abstain.
Abstain.
One abstention. And next for council's consideration is 6C, approve minutes from September 12th council meeting.
September 19th.
I'm sorry, September 19th council meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from September 19th.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
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 Abstain.
Oppose. One abstention. All right. Moving on to our regular agenda. For council's consideration, 7A, which is Resolution 9262201, designation of election judges for the 2022 state general elections. And Karen, I believe you're walking us through this.
Thank you, Mayor Bain and council members. This in the agenda, in the packet, is for the designation of the election judges. Normally, this goes into the consent agenda, but all things being elections and it being heavily scrutinized, wanted to put it on the regular agenda for you guys to review. And so this is, we have a JPA with Washington County. They're the ones who select and hire our election judges. So what is in the packet is a resolution that approves those election judges they have selected and hired, and then the list of judges that accompany that resolution. The recommendation would be to approve the list.
Very good. And maybe an opportunity also just to highlight again that because of the precinct changes, this will be the first election cycle where we are operating under the new precinct structure. And so, council, you will see the precincts identified along with each election judge by precinct. Any questions, comments?
I think just a comment for me. I just, I want to thank them for their service generally and for their service to Forest Lake and doing their part to ensure free and fair elections. It's their, they have an extremely important role, and I have a lot of gratitude for their willingness to take that on.
Very well stated.
I certainly don't have any objections with any of them. Don't know, don't know them all, but there's no reason to object to any of them either,
Mayor Bain, I move adoption of Resolution Number 09-26-22-01, a resolution appointing election judges for the November 8th, 2022 state general election.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. And items approved. Next item tonight is 7B, motor grader purchase approval, the 2023 Caterpillar 14AWD. And Dave?
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm here tonight to seek approval to get to sign a purchase order for a 2023 Caterpillar So the bigger equipment that we purchase gets purchased off of the state bid, which is completely bid. Unique thing is, is that the motor grader contract expires on September 30th, and the new contract starts October 1st. And in talking with the vendor, they're estimating that there'll be about a 10% increase due to supply chain and just inflation costs. So I'm here tonight just because of our current purchasing policy and that we technically haven't approved the budget for 2023. I'm just here tonight to see if we could get approval to get that signed purchase agreement or approve me to purchase that. We'd realize a savings of about $20,000 between September 30th and October 1st. And being that it's already in the budget, and we still want to incur costs until 2023, builds are at approximately 12 to 14 months. So if we're lucky, we may see it about this time next year. But just, just to try to financially save some dollars, if, you know, kind of the 10-year plan and the CIP budget looks pretty solid, that this would be an easy way to save $20,000 or not incur an additional $20,000. So with that bid, we'd basically only $310 over the estimated CIP line item on that 401 fund, and then $20,000 over in about a week from now. So I'd be happy to take any questions, but that's basically what I'm looking for, is to sign a purchase order agreement, approve a sign of purchase or agreement for a purchase of that 2023 grader.
One question, Dave, or Patrick. So this is a 2023 budget CIP item, and so the cash expenditure would not be until 2023 because that's when we take delivery. Is it considered then a 2023 budget expense as well?
Yes.
So there's, it's budget neutral?
There's no budget expense for '22, no.
2022, okay.
And there's no issue approving this before we approve the budget, the levy?
I don't believe there is any ramifications of you approving it today. I mean, it's a wise move at this point to save $20,000. If, and the budget has been, if you've seen the capital budget, unless there's a real objection to what the capital budget says and is going to project for the next few years, it should be okay financially at least.
It's just more of a procedural question for me. I know I made a mistake.
Yeah, there's no, I don't believe there's a procedural hurdle that can stop you, will stop you from approving this prior to. It's actually a purchase request. It's just when we pay for it's really what we're doing.
Okay.
I think it would be different as well if this was one of the pieces of equipment that we were discussing for bonding or getting an equipment certificate, but this would just be a pay-as-you-go. So I think that would maybe be a little different if it was one of the pieces of equipment for certificates, so.
Okay. Well, $20,000 isn't insignificant for sure.
Yeah, I've been looking through the other ones on our CIP, and the plow trucks would be another, but we can't even get bids for plow trucks right now. They're telling us they won't even give numbers until January 1st, so. But I kind of looked through a bunch of our CIP items to see if there'd be any cost savings, but this would be the biggest one and the most damaging back the other way if we lost that $20,000. Because in all reality, I'd have to change our budget amount on October 1st to $220,000 because I'd know that would be the price then, so it would affect the levy, you know, in a week, so.
I am deep in the weeds, but just something that stands out to me on the quote is the trade-in price. Is that, are we seeing increased trade-in value on our equipment? And because that's actually pretty significant, I mean, it's half of the purchase price.
Passive. Yeah, our last grader we traded, and I think we got $40,000 for.
Yeah, and this is $186,000.
$186,000, so.
Wow.
Regular equipment's going up, but not as much as used. Used is actually probably going up higher, just like used cars are just going crazy. So we're realizing a pretty good trade-in on this, too.
Yeah, and I guess, and is that a quarter trade-in? Is that?
Yep. So if we sign the purchase agreement, that would be locked in at that price, so it wouldn't change if we put another $500 in on that grader between now and then. That price would be what, what we get for it.
Right. I don't have any other, I don't have any other questions, and I think it's a wise, I think it's a wise timing move. It was some, it's, it's one of those, personally, from my perspective, it's one of those items on the CIP that's not in question, and so I, moving the timing up, I don't have any hesitation over.
Are you ready for a motion?
I am, if, and if there's other council discussion points?
No, I have no objection at all to.
Mayor Bain, I make a motion to approve the purchase of the 2023 Caterpillar 140AWD motor grader for $200,310.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. And motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, there's consideration of Resolution 9262202, which is our adoption of our 2023 preliminary property tax levy. And Patrick?
Yes. Before you, as the mayor mentioned, is a resolution to approve the property tax levy. As you know, this is a requirement that we pass this by September 30th. It sets the levy for the 2023 year. However, it doesn't mean we cannot change the levy. It just means the levy can't go up. We can still, as we go forward with the budget process, reduce that levy, and we will try to do that if at all possible. Also, citizens in the council have been, have noticed, the council has gone through the entire budget at this point, gone through the general fund and all the funds related to the levy, the park dedication fund, two capital funds, the EDA, and the debt service. We've also presented the council and the community with the 10-year plan, which will, is based off this levy. So any adjustments will affect it minorly as we go forward. The original levy that we proposed when we issued the budget was an increase of 7.52%. We've made a small adjustment so far. We're recommending a total levy of $13,192,515, which is an increase of $913,815, or a 7.44% increase in the levy. Again, just reminding all who are listening and are here in the room that this is the ceiling of a levy, and we can still possibly reduce that as more information comes forward through some of our labor contracts, through some of our state subsidies, and any other revenues that we may readjust when we get there.
Thank you, Patrick. So tonight's consideration does include a public hearing. Perhaps let's hear if there are any questions, preliminary questions from council first. Go ahead.
Your Honor, members of council, tonight is the approval of the preliminary levy and setting the public hearing for December for approval of the final levy.
I am missing that entirely.
Patrick, I hope I'm not catching you here too much, but are you able to kind of summarize those general fund increases, just kind of high level? I know, you know, contract settlements and...
Sure, that's, that's a problem. As the council knows, we have five labor unions. Three of those contracts are settled, so that's an increase in wages. When you increase wages, it's also an increase in benefits, health insurance, life insurance, pensions, all go along with that in tandem. We also have two outstanding labor contracts that we've had to make some assumptions for the police sergeants and the police patrol. Again, those assumptions have been made for salaries, wages, and benefits. Those are always and historically are the major forces behind any of the increases in not only the general fund but all funds. We are requesting one position addition in the community development department to assist with that process, but that's all we're asking for as far as that goes. Not much else as far as that except regular increases in goods and services and associated costs. So that's where it is. When you look at our increases, it's mostly wages, benefits, and material costs. So there aren't any major initiatives left in the budget this year for the general fund except that one position, but I think that's a good thing. I think the position is necessary, but everything else is pretty standard and just reflecting increase in costs.
In my, my recollection is we were figuring a 2% increase in those costs, 2% increase in kind of goods and services approximately?
Probably, if I recall, it was about 2%. It's probably closer to 3 now, but I would think. And that's probably it, to be honest, it's conservative considering what's going on right now. So we'll have to be vigilant next year, watching those prices and watching what it's doing to our budget, and then hopefully, if we have to make changes mid-year to keep within our, whatever budget the council passes, we'll have to do that. But this, again, I think I said at the beginning, the first meeting, that this has been a difficult budget year to try to, not mechanics of it, but how to figure out where the economy's going and how it's affecting your budget, and that's a difficult one. The other major change in there is a small increase for paid-on-call firefighters, and that's an effort to continue to retain firefighters and stay away as far as we can, at least for as long as we can, I should say, from full-time firefighters, which is a very expensive operation to take, so.
So I misspoke at the beginning of the meeting and said that there was a public hearing, and thank you for correcting me. However, I am always happy to take public comment, and so if there is a member of the audience that wants to speak, happy to, happy to provide that opportunity. Just wanted to pause and see if there was any comments, any input anybody wanted to provide. All right, we don't have to do a technical public hearing. That will be, we will not miss that step in December, but just wanted to provide that opportunity. So let's bring conversation back to council. Any other questions, points to highlight, things, last-minute considerations that anyone would like to make?
Do you have Kevin's tax increase chart?
I do.
Okay. Can you, can you maybe summarize that as well?
The impact?
Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you.
Soon as I find it.
I wasn't sure if it was going to go up on the screen or...
No, I don't have it up. I actually don't have my machine today, so hold on, it's...
Are you referring to the tax rate?
I've got a copy of it here that I copied from, is it working?
That's the one. Oh, got it.
Just give me a moment to... So if you, Kevin provided you with a chart that showed two distinct things, and I'm not sure if you're interested, and both of those are just the first. Under the current levy, a home value with, of, for example, $250,000 would see a dollar increase of $115. $300,000 home would be $134, $350 would be $153 increase, and a $400,000 home of value would be 171 annual increase. That's if we remain at the proposed levy right now. Again, minor adjustments may make that lower. One of the things we did talk to the council about is historically, for the last 10 years or so, you've been floating at a 40 to 41%, 2% tax rate. Being that the reassessment was quite a bit high this year, it was about 26% reassessment, that lowered that tax rate to approximately 35%. One of the policy discussions we went over in one of the earlier meetings was, do we want to keep that at consistent to 40%? If we did so, that would generate an additional approximately $1.5 million to, in the levies to, for us to allocate in a certain way, shape, or form, depending what that, whether it was equipment, whether it was streets, things like that. If we were to keep that at approximately a 40% tax increase, the same $250,000 of valued home, instead of increasing by $115 as proposed, would see an increase of $225. A $300,000 home instead of the 134 spoken would increase to $270,000. A $350,000 home from the 153 to 315 annual, and the $400,000 value house would go from $171 to $359,000. Really, that was a policy question, just an informational thing to the council to determine if you wanted to try to keep that 40% tax rate the same. Understandably, that is quite an increase to the homeowners, but I mean, it's really based on what the assessment and the assessor did to, not only to the homes in Forest Lake, but to the entire county, I'm sure, so.
Madam Mayor, that was one of the biggest concerns that we heard during the comments at the Board of Appeals thing, you know, what's going to happen to our taxes just because of the, because a lot of folks felt that that was artificial.
Sure.
And in some ways it is. You know, it's, it's just following inflation or whatever was going on at the time. It could, hopefully, it's going to go back down again. And when, whatever, and I, so, me personally, I would never support that this particular year. The 7.4% is even tough, knowing that, you know, people lost 10% of their buying power this year, you know, and they're the ones that pay the taxes. And I understand that we have issues here and things to pay for and all that, but we got to be thinking about our taxpayers, too. So the 40% tax rate, just, this is one vote. I would not support that, so.
Yeah. It's a difficult thing to, to consider, only because, like, like you mentioned, the next year or two years, if the housing market does south, goes south a little bit, that assessment may reverse. And so then, how do you get that back towards your 40%? You'd rather try to grow back into it than try to, if you're up at 45 or 50% because of the housing market crashed a little bit, to get that back to a 40%. So it's, it's always easier to kind of scoot up than it is to cut. And that's, you know, and when I say it's a million five is what you would gain, well, consider if it was opposite, you'd have to, we'd have to try to compensate for a million five in the budget, and that's, that's a very, very large task to try to, try to accomplish.
Yeah, correct, okay.
Yeah, so when I saw that, that was my biggest concern because, just the conversations we had at the Board of Appeals, it was, the room was packed. Go, go ahead.
I agree wholeheartedly. And personally, my response, as folks were voicing concern about what their property values, what that would mean for their property values as far as tax increases, my response was, come back and see us during budget season in the summer and provide that feedback on what are we doing with the general fund levy and are we continuing to maintain some level of fiscal conservatism? And yes, 7-plus percent is a large number, but I think if you, it's balanced based on, if you look at our, it's kind of striking that balance of our future needs and, you know, what's needed to continue for those projects and keep those funds in a good position, but also to recognize that, that all of the dynamics that created that market rate are creating some stress and that we should kind of take that, this is an opportunity to have that fairly sizable decrease in tax rate.
Yeah, I, I agree wholeheartedly, and I know we've had many conversations about the potential for some bonding, 2 and 23, 24, and so I think it's a, I think it's wise to kind of pull back here a little bit, give, give our taxpayers an opportunity to breathe a little bit, and then kind of reassess.
Yeah, I would have a hard time disagreeing with you, and I also then draw back to the 10-year projections that we've just given the council and the community. It shows that we're trying to be responsible, conservative, and taking all aspects into account so that we can plan for the future and do it reasonably and, and with some kind of a vision and a structure so that we can make the adjustments we need to make without going up and down, and up and down on tax rates, but also understanding that this kind of a 10-year plan also gives us a resource to adjust if we have market forces that either are for us or against us.
Other points or questions?
No question, but I would concur with what's been said so far. And I also just, I know we're not, this is preliminary, but I just want to thank the staff again for the very thorough presentation that you gave last week and just getting this to a preliminary number because it was a tough year, a tough year to budget.
All right, so I'm happy to entertain further discussion or questions. Also to point out that the resolution for consideration is on page 109 of our packet, Resolution 9262202.
Mayor Bain, I move adoption of Resolution Number 09-26-22-02, resolution approving the 2023 preliminary property tax levy and preliminary 2023 budget and setting public tax hearing date for the 2023 budget and property tax levy. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Maybe, I think it's worth noting that the public hearing will be held on December 12th, 2022, at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you for that. And my, my question or discussion point was going to be, Patrick, can you kind of walk us through a planned calendar of events between now and December of future council consideration of the budget?
Yes, we will have, not identified exactly what dates they're going to be at this point. We hope to finish our negotiations with the two outstanding contracts. We hope to reassess some of our revenues as the months go by, particularly the building revenues, and those are the major ones. We hope to assess the revenues, any state shared revenues and things like that. So what we will have is either during a council meeting in the discussion phase or at a workshop, additional budget information as it comes along. I'm not sure exactly when or what that will be. We have, the labor are scheduled for second meeting with the patrolmen are in October, around the 9th, I believe it is. And we're not scheduled with the sergeants until November. So after those, we will probably be talking to you publicly and in close session about some of those contracts and some of those issues. We hope to have an amicable settlement on both of those fronts. We are also then awaiting the health insurance renewal. Markets are trending at the 15%. So we're hoping to get a better rate than that or possibly look at changing the provider if that's necessary, but we haven't got that far. That is also due in October. So October is a pretty big month for some of that stuff. So we will be scheduling updates and presenting items as they come along to make adjustments to the budget, hopefully not higher ones, which I don't think that are going to happen, but hopefully maybe we'll come in some savings depending on what we're, what the results of some of those issues are.
Thank you. Council, there is a motion and a second on the table. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. And motion carries. That brings us to the end of our planned action agenda this evening. this evening, and we do not have any planned workshop topics, and so we will move right into staff updates, and Karen.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmembers, if I don't have any updates, I'm happy to answer questions.
Dan?
Uh, mayor, members of the council, uh, I just want to let everybody know that coming up here, I think in three weeks to a month from now, I'll be going to the Men Car Expo to promote the city of Forest Lake to the development community. Um, I went last year, and there was quite a bit of activity that resulted from that expo, so I'll be going in again this year. Um, and then just a quick update on the headwires, one twenty-three, we are still seeing requests for informations floating around, and responding to those as they come forward, that, for projects that would fit that potential use. So, um, there is still quite a bit of activity in the development world, and we're responding with, um, those RFI's as they come in, so that's what I got.
Very good. Dan, between now and election day, can we include on social media, on, maybe it's already on the newsletter, I think I missed the last version, just around the polling place locations, just so folks have that information, and maybe bump it to the front of the website if it's not already there?
Can do.
Excellent, thank you.
With a map.
Map is on our elections page, so we have a whole elections page. The map is there, there's links to click on all of this.
Okay, good. Patrick?
Uh, one of the items today on the agenda that was pulled was the Belt Park Master Plan. Um, we hope to schedule that for the October workshop, uh, to review that and get the council updated on that before we move forward with what we believe should be a contract. Uh, at the same time, we, uh, MinDOT has asked, uh, for, uh, time during, or we've suggested that time for MinDOT to come back to the council and talk to them about ninety-seven and the up, update on that. So we'll bring that forward, and I already mentioned, uh, wanted to give you an update on the two labor contracts that are standing, when those negotiations are happening, so we have that already. That's all I have right now.
Anything for, anything else for Patrick?
Uh, no update, your honor.
All right, thank you. Dave?
No updates.
Ryan?
Uh, mayor, city council, just some additional information with the Highway ninety-seven project that MinDOT's planning for two thousand and twenty-five construction. That's the project they would be talking about, um, basically pretty depth and detail of what we've been discussing at a staff level, uh, for a year and a half or so now. So, uh, if you've got any questions prior to going to that council, or see anything that you guys want to talk about, feel free to reach out, so you guys are informed and, you know, know what you're looking at, and, you know, how detailed this conceptual geometric layout really is gonna be, that's gonna be presented to you guys at that workshop. With that being said, then too, we're gonna follow up with our first public engagement, uh, open house here, November first, that's a Tuesday, I believe, uh, four P M. to six P M. up in the community room. So this will be the first time that the public will see this concept. Uh, this is, you know, it's gonna be a great safety improvement, and with that, there's gonna be a lot of questions and concerns, so just want to make sure you guys are ready for that November first, uh, public engagement, open house for the Highway ninety-seven project that's planned for two thousand and twenty-five construction.
What time?
Four P M. to six P M.
Four P M. to six P M.
MinDOT will be here as early as three P M. to start setting up for that, so if you want to get here early to that day of, and ask some questions, you know, prior to the, the crowd arriving, you most certainly could do some of that, too.
Are we, um, do we, do they send specific invites to specific neighborhoods that are spec, that are, um, impacted, or?
Yep, they'll, they'll reach out with their communications, and then they'll also work with the city on getting stuff posted upon our social media stuff as well, just like we did with Washington County's.
Perfect.
Items.
That was what I wanted to make sure of. We had, we had nice attendance at that, at that event, so, very good. And you sit in the community room?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, anything else for Ryan? Chief Peterson?
Hey, the only item I have for you tonight is, um, October fifth is going to be National Coffee with a Cop Day, and Key's Cafe and Bakery is going to be, uh, hosting that for us between nine A M. and eleven A M. And we always, uh, try to, uh, have, I don't know, anywhere from three to four Coffee with a Cops throughout the, the year, and we always try to, um, support our local businesses, and, um, this time it's Key's Cafe. So, um, hope to see people there. It's a good way to, um, engage with the community, meet some of the police officers that work in the community here, and get to know them, and also to, uh, ask any questions that they may have for us. Other than that, nothing else to update you with, unless you have questions for me?
What was that date? Again, October?
October fifth.
Yes.
Wednesday.
You said nine to eleven, chief?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for chief? Chief Newman?
Mayor, members of the council, I've got a lot of updates today. Uh, next Thursday the twenty-ninth, we have a joint fire board meeting here at Station One. Uh, we will be covering, uh, a variety of topics. The main topic will be approval of engine one replacement. Uh, once it works its way through joint fire board, it will be brought forth to the council for discussion. Uh, second week of October, we have, uh, National Fire Prevention Week that runs October ninth through the fifteenth. Uh, during this week, we do fire station visits. We, uh, do a program for daycares and schools, preschools through second grade. Uh, we will, uh, during that, we talk to between fifteen hundred and two thousand preschoolers to second graders. Our open house is scheduled for Saturday, October fifteenth, from ten to one P M. here at the fire station. Uh, we will have police fire EMS, we'll land a helicopter, we'll demonstrate an auto extrication, and we'll burn a car.
It's a full agenda.
I'm coming.
Good public relations. Five years ago, we started, uh, handling CPR in the community to teach residents, uh, how to respond to sudden cardiac arrest. Uh, sudden cardiac arrest affects everybody from senior citizens to, uh, infants, and, uh, teaching the public how to respond to that has shown, uh, that it does save lives. Uh, since, or when we started that program, it was a partnership between police, uh, fire, and the Forest Lake Lions, who had purchased all the equipment with the mannequins and E E Ds and, and equipment that we would need to, uh, teach the public on how to do that. Since we started that, uh, even with COVID, we have taught over three thousand residents in Forest Lake. Uh, this year, uh, we have stepped it up, and so, uh, starting this week, we, or in the next couple of weeks, we start with the Forest Lake Hoops Clubs. Uh, all flock coaches in Forest Lake will go through this program, football, volleyball, uh, basketball. Uh, we'll do a lot of organizations like Forest Lake Masonics Lodge. Uh, this week, we're in the high school, so all ten graders at Forest Lake Senior High will go through this program as well, and, uh, we have other, uh, programs set up for bars, restaurants, manufacturers, churches, schools, businesses, and, as well as classes that are open to the public. Uh, the public can look at our Forest Lake Hands Only CPR Facebook page, if they're interested in taking the class, or they can go to the Forest Lake Fire Department Facebook page and hit the link to get to the Hands Only CPR class. Last of all, uh, Sunday, September seventeen through September twenty-fourth, I was on vacation, and it was extremely busy for the fire department. We had twenty calls in that seven-day stretch, two structure fires in Forest Lake, one structure fire in Hugo, a search and rescue in Columbus, two vehicle accident, or one vehicle accident with, uh, ejection, uh, fire alarms, uh, medicals, gas leaks, and various other calls. So it was a busy week for them last week. No injuries, and equipment ran good. That's all I have for updates, unless you have questions for me.
Any questions for chief? All right, and Kim?
No updates, thank you.
Very good. Uh, bring updates back to council. We'll start with councilmember Munson?
No updates.
All right, councilmember Bystron?
No updates for me.
Councilmember Husnick?
Uh, me either, no, no updates tonight.
And councilmember Valenta?
No updates for me tonight.
I also don't have an update tonight, um, other than just personal note, had the unfortunate opportunity of seeing the fire department in action on Thursday night, and just, man, if you ever have to call or have a friend that has to call nine-one-one, you just want, and they'll be, other than these guys responding, so thank you, much appreciated. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and we're adjourned. Thank you all.